I'm calling the finance committee meeting scheduled for 6:30 to order. Request that the clerk take a roll call vote.
Counselor Andronico.
Just a clarification, a vote or just a roll call for attendance?
Just a roll call for attendance.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Chairman Phelan.
Present.
Eight members, you have a form.
Okay, also, I'm gonna read in the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or a video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any media medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Okay, we're gonna be starting the meeting before us and on, we have two agenda items. One is, what is the agenda item for $2,300,000 for a purchase of a new fire truck, a new ladder, a new, a new engine and ladder truck for the Quincy Fire Department? At this time, I'd like to open it up for a brief presentation. Is Chief Jackson on?
I am, I'm present, Chuck.
Okay, Chief, you wanna go into a little bit about what the appropriations for?
Yeah, this will be a new engine and a new ladder, like you said, the engine would be replacing Engine 3 down in Quincy Point, and the ladder truck would be replacing Ladder 1 that's running out of headquarters right now. Both of them at the end of their lifespan and we're in need of, you know, basically just another engine, another ladder. Takes a couple of years to get these things built, so I wanted to get this request in as soon as possible because Ladder 1 particularly, it's 11 years old, it has a huge response area, it's showing its age right now, so if we could get another ladder truck especially built within the next couple of years, that'd be great.
Okay, and do, do we have any questions from any of the councilors? Counselor, Counselor Liang.
Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief, I just wanted to ask if I could, hi, good evening Chief, by the way.
Counselor.
For the prices that are in here, and thank you, by the way, for sending the proposals over to us through Bulldog, it does say here that within approximately 360 days to 420 calendar days, that's when we'll be able to have these ladders fully executed. So, there are contingencies built into this cost, only because I'm thinking about the shortage of essentially everything right now and prices going up, and I wanna make sure that because there's such a long lag time here, that you have everything you need to get this order placed without having to come back in front of us if there are any changes in pricing, because again, I know with things fluctuating right now, if there are contingencies built in, that will assure, I think, you, right, and when you go forward with this purchase, that if there are any changes, you can just move forward with it.
Yeah, I think I appreciate the question, I think that the amount I'm asking for actually will be enough, we're not locked into the price just yet. And other manufacturers have gone up, I expect that KME, which is who we buy off of, I expect they'll be going up, but they haven't yet, as soon as this hopefully gets approved, they'll be able to lock us into a price, and I think they'll be fine going forward.
Absolutely, yeah, again, I think this is a no brainer, I mean, we continue to grow as a city, we certainly need to make sure that those who are called to protect and serve our city have what they need to do so, and so I just wanna make sure you have, you know, what you need from us as well to move forward with this purchase, so thank you, Chief, thank you for what you do, I'd like to make a wish to approve.
Thank you.
There's been a motion to approve, do I have a second? Don't need.
I may.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to approve, and Counselor Mahoney was next.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation, and I know we spoke earlier today, and I am absolutely in agreement with the things that we need here in Quincy, and apparatus for your, for the fire department is very, very important. I did bring up at the last meeting when this came in that we should probably look at the COVID money to see if this is the appropriate use, and I know it was questioned whether or not it would be. I know a few weeks ago, we did ask to create a residential tax break for our residents, because the taxes are getting very high, and when we bond things, it creates more and more taxes for our our taxpayers at home, and this would be an appropriate use for the COVID money, I know we also asked for a COVID presentation in front of the city council that we're still waiting for. I believe at that meeting, I was told that they would look into whether or not this is an appropriate use, but I did my research too, and Portsmouth, Rhode Island, they're using 5.1 of their American Rescue Act plan to fund and rehabilitate apparatuses for their fire department. In New Bedford, they were asking to use 2.4 million dollars, and in Michigan, they're using the money from the ARPA funds to replace, to replace their apparatuses for their fire trucks. Here in Quincy, we did actually use COVID money to purchase, I believe, vehicles for the Natural Resource Department, I think it was snowplows. And further research, I looked up, there's a, there's all sorts of research for the ARPA money that you can find now, but one of the things that I thought was very interesting is, can we purchase a new truck with fire funds? With the funds, and it says that we would be eligible to use the ARPA monies for that, so I guess my concern is, is that we're asking to bond the 2.3 million dollars when, you know, we're in a state right now where we do have access to federal money that is supposed to help our community, and I'm hoping that we will reconsider bonding and rather use, ask to use the COVID money for this particular purchase. I'm in absolute support of this purchase, I'm just looking out for the taxpayers.
Thank you, Counselor.
And if we need, we could table this and come back to it if we need a presentation for the COVID money first, but I mean, honestly, this is an appropriate use for COVID money.
For you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, to you, the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker.
I believe Mr. Mason has some elaboration for Counsel Mahoney on this, if that's okay with the body.
Yep, Mr. Mason.
Through you, Chairman, thank you, good evening, Council. To direct that concern, we're in a, we're in a very unique environment right now in terms of the ability to borrow, so we're facing about a three, if it's okay with the, with the chairman, I'd like to share my screen.
Sure, yes.
All right, everybody should see an Excel spreadsheet of that. Does anybody see an Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay, so, one of the things we have to consider when we borrow is the cost over time. So when we do borrow, say we were to spend 2.3 million dollars on a fire truck immediately, in a traditional borrowing environment, there would probably be benefits to that greater than if we were to take out a note for buying it directly. But currently, we are expected to see, and I'll actually bring up, this is a Fed release recently, talking about what the long horizon and short horizon interest rates are. So we're viewing about a 3 to 3.16% long horizon interest rate curve, or inflation curve affecting our interest rates. So if we've got the fire truck expenditure, if we were to put 2.3 million dollars out today, we would pay back 2.3 million dollars in principal, among with payments that total about $3 million. But when we adjust those dollars, that are perpetually getting weaker and weaker over time because of inflation, so if we used, say, $20, $43 to pay back a bill in 2022, which would make sense, because these fire trucks last decades, and we should absorb that cost, the taxpayer today should not be paying for the use of a piece of equipment 20 years down the road, we can see that adds far lower amount of money, especially when adjusted for inflation, it saves about $106,000, because the borrowing parameters that we're experiencing right now are very advantageous to capital purchases. We're experiencing about a 3% to 3.15% interest inflation rate, and we have a note rate of about 2.8%. So just to add some context to the borrowing mechanism, why a proposal for borrowing is, does follow good, sound financial practices. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Is that, is that the presentation we all set?
I can dive deeper into, into projected debt periods.
Well, that's okay. I think that's okay, I think that's okay, we can, we can move on and, at this, at this time.
If I could, if I could, if I could, Chairman, I still, I'd like to follow up with that. So, the reality of it though is, we're bonding, whether or not the length of the time that you bond, and the same thing could be said for all of the purchase of capital, capital purchase that we bought, from the Monroe Building to the Marina, to the Verp Building, to the building that was over in West Quincy, the same thing should be said, then we should be bonding that out, but yet, we're using COVID money to purchase acquisitions of buildings. And in this particular case, when we're talking about COVID money, and other communities are using this as an appropriate use, because it's something that's gonna benefit the whole community, because that fire apparatus and the, and the vehicle, the, the other apparatus that we're purchasing for the city of Quincy will benefit any place, and any place that there's a fire will be able to benefit us, so this is, this is really a question of whether or not we're using it to actually help our taxpayers. There are gonna be plenty of projects, from what I understand, coming down the road that we can bond, but not a lot that we're seeing.
Yeah, you went mute, Counsel Mahoney, you mute, you mute button is on?
Well, then that was a lot of wasted time, huh? Well, that's, that's okay, so all I'm saying is that, quite honestly, the, the explanation of borrowing money over the course of time, because it's great interest rates, that's fantastic, but we've also used the COVID money to purchase acquisitions of buildings, and the same could be said for that as well. Because we purchased the Monroe Building, we purchased the Marina, we purchased the Verp Building, we purchased four different acquisitions of buildings without anybody knowing here in the city of Quincy. Yet, the appropriate uses of COVID money, being able to use, this is, this would be the perfect appropriate use of COVID money, and it would benefit the whole community, meaning the whole city of Quincy could benefit from this apparatus being purchased, and the taxpayers would save 2.3 million dollars. And I believe, Mr. Mason, there'll be plenty of other projects that will come before us that we have to bond, that we can utilize that same spreadsheet that you just showed us of how it can be used. I'm just suggesting that, we have not had that presentation for COVID, how we're spending the money in the appropriate use, and how other communities, from Rhode Island to Michigan, to the state of Massachusetts, are using COVID money to purchase fire apparatuses, so maybe they don't have the same economic layout that you have, because they're using it. It is an appropriate use, and I would urge my councilors, as I said, we talked about trying to give our taxpayers a tax break with residential tax break, but every time we bond, we cannot give them to that, because we have to figure out how we're doing that, as well as we ask for a presentation for the COVID money. And here we are tonight, where we have a perfect opportunity to use COVID money to save the taxpayers the burden of 2.3 million dollars in bonding, and we're being told that it's better to bond, it's better to finance this. Debt is debt, we have to pay it, whether we pay it over 30 years or we use it now, as we all know, it'd be better to just pay cash upfront if you can, but, you know, we don't get to see that presentation, I do also know if that was the case, why then did we purchase the vehicles for the Natural Resource Center and Natural Resource Department, as opposed to bonding those as well? Because we have purchased apparatuses for other departments, and just, I'm questioning that. Thank you.
Okay, any other councilors?
Counselor Andronico had his hand raised.
Counselor Andronico.
Thank you, Counsel Phelan, just very briefly, I wanted to thank the Chief for joining us tonight, and I did want to express my thanks to the administration for making sure that Ward 2 gets the services that they need, and the resources we needed within our fire department and able to better service people and make sure that they're protected and safe, you know, when a fire does happen. Ladder 1 at HQ on Quincy Ave, and of course, Engine 3 in, in the point. Both very important, and I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this tonight, without delay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other councilors? I did see Counsel Harris, was his hand up, does he wanna be recognized?
He dropped off, he's rejoining right now.
Okay, I know he had his hand up. If there are no other councilors, I'd like to speak. I, oh, Counsel DeBona, I recognize Counsel President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to just elaborate a little bit about our history with aspiratus in the city. Obviously, it's a very important matter, getting the proper equipment to allow our firefighters to do their jobs around the city, especially when there's a fire out there. Over the last few years, Congress, our US Congressman Lynch has secured some federal grant funding for this, for previous aspiratus, you know, they used the Federal Fire Act grants, and then previously off of the Safer Grant Programs, and I know a lot of the firefighters have done a lot of grant, grant writing in the last few years, and have combined to, you know, to fund a lot of these aspiratus previously. You know, it's almost tick for tat, where this particular case is, we now have to fund it by bonding it, so we, they've come to the table, Rescue 1 Truck is currently at our headquarters, which is new, and then we have Engine 2 Truck in North Quincy, which is new. A thank you to Congressman Lynch over the last few years for securing some of that funding for that, and here, we're in a situation where this, the build out on this is gonna take some time. What I'm hearing is a year, possibly two years, just depending on, and I think the factory was moved from Pennsylvania to New Orleans, I believe. And, you know, so that's gonna take a little bit, is that correct, Chief?
Correct, yep.
Correct, so it's gonna take a little bit of time to build this, they have to, our particular stations are, are getting older, obviously, and the weight of these machineries have obviously gone up over time, just for the durability of them. And I'm not an expert in the field, I just, just the information of Counsel, Counsel President Bowles, that gave me a letter just previously stating that, you know, how important these, in these stations, sometimes they have to be customly built, because the height on some of these, these aspiratus is just too high, and sometimes they have to be pushed down a couple of inches. I know, being over the North Quincy station, it's barely making it by probably two inches, and on some days, you might not be able to get that vehicle out of the station, so it's a hit or miss sometimes, obviously, if you had some ice out there, it'd pop it up a little bit, so some of these have to be customly built for our stations, and until we get to a situation where we refurbish our stations and get to another level with years down the road, with, with doing our fire stations across the city of Quincy, we're gonna have to do with what we have on site, so I think this is, this is a good purpose. They've outlined what we need to do, and I agree with Counsel Mahoney on the American Rescue funding, and what that moves, moves into the next dimension on on using it for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. But for this particular item, Congressman Lynch has come to the table over the last few years and has secured some grants, and in this time around, it's gonna come in front of this body, so I'm happy to support this tonight, and I'm looking forward to, obviously, getting this, 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 I guess, invoice in, and possibly getting this built and putting on to the streets of Quincy for our, for our residents of our city to keep us safe, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, for all your time, I'm happy to support this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Is there any other councilors? Seeing none at this time, I'd like to speak, I think this is this is an important, we need, you know, the fire apparatus, it's not apparatus that we all have for a couple of years, it's usually around 20 years, 30 years, it lasts a long time, and it's very well built, and it's, it's keeping not only the residents of Quincy safe, but the firefighters who man the apparatus safe. So I think it's a, it's a worthwhile thing, I think Mr. Mason explained it with the, with the bonding rates and the way we are now, we're, we're at a point where we can do this, and I think we should move forward, because like the Chief said, this is gonna take a couple of years, so I would intend to voting for this. Is there any other councilors wish to speak? Hearing, hearing none, we have a motion on the table. I would ask the clerk committees to make a, make a, make a vote.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Eight members have positive recommendation.
Thank you, councilors. Eight members, we move that forward. Thank you, Chief, for attending.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, the next, the next item on our agenda is an appropriation of $1,500,000 feasible study, feasibility study of the new Squatom Elementary School in accordance with MSBA process. So at this time, I believe we have a presentation that's being put forward by the head of, I'll defer to, yes, I'll defer to Chris Walker, the mayor's executive, executive assistant for, for a, for a presentation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, can everyone see the screen at this time?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Hines, if that's the case, and I'll try my handiwork with the actual slides.
Good afternoon, good evening, committee members, nice to be before you again. On the call, on the meeting here, is also Superintendent Balby and Laura Owens of Quincy Public Schools. Superintendent Balby's April Assistant, and I believe Ms. Perkins drawn a blank on her name, but she's on as well, the deputy superintendent. We work so well together on the Christopherrow Center, I can't believe I've drawn a blank on her name, but I do apologize for that. So, working with the MSBA is not something that's new to the city of Quincy. We've had great success in having a new high school, two middle, two new middle schools, and probably close to a dozen of the accelerated repair programs, whether it be boilers, roofs, or window projects indoors. So we're barking down that again, and through the core program of the MSBA for the Squatom School. The Squatom School is something that we've tried over the last number of years to get accepted into the program, and through great effort and perseverance of Mayor Tote, the MSBA has invited that school in to the, this eligibility period that we're in now to move forward, to see if they will participate with the city on the building of a new Squatom School. I think universally across the board, everyone's in agreement that the Squatom School is probably in the worst condition of all of our school buildings. The handicap accessibility issues, layout overcrowding, ventilation, there's many issues there, and it's long overdue, it was opened in 1919, its first wing. All again, but we are in the eligibility period. We have completed many of the steps up to this point. And one thing I will note, that going through the process, the MSBA recommended a school of, I think, with 335 students. And the superintendent's team, and myself, the superintendent, Laura Owens, we met, and devised a plan for an appeal that we're entitled to do. Pulled together some significant information, in particular, to the city of Quincy with regard to our enrollments in our youth school, and the growth in housing stock. So, the MSBA did listen to us, and they did revise their project. They have agreed to certify the school for 380 students, which is great news. We really wasn't gonna be any bigger than it is now, when it's already overcrowded. So, we are now at the feasibility funding period, and that's over here before you, for. The feasibility is, we process through the MSBA, they mandate that we now take in a project designer, an owner's project manager, a representative, and we begin the due diligence, on properly sizing the building, layouts, many, many facets, to it. One of the ones, the MSBA has a program that we're, we're going to participate in, and I know there's been a lot of talk about it, rightfully so, about making a Net Zero building. We do agree to endeavor to do that, to the extent that we are able to do that. So, the $1.5 million that is before you now is obviously the first tranche of funding that's needed for this project to move forward. The MSBA does have a board meeting scheduled for next week, where they will advance to, excuse me, vote to advance the Squatom program, provided the city of Quincy has shown its dedication to the program by providing this funding. So the screen, the slide on the screen to you now is what the breakdown of that $1.5 billion is. You can obviously see it's $400,000 for the owner's project manager, and that, the design team and the owner's project manager, they generally stay on throughout the entire process, all the way to construction and completion and closeout, but this is the initial agreements with those, those professionals. Like I said, there's $750,000 for the design team, the architects and the engineers. There's also environmental and site testing, you know, it, we have to make sure the site is clean, if there's anything needs to be done through it, it should be clean, but the due diligence requires that it be tested, and part of that testing as well will be significant support, heat pumps and geothermal, and those type of systems that help us to design for the Net Zero. The $50,000 basically is contingency, any of these other ones overrun, or if we do run into some for the test that needs to be done, things like that. So, going into longer presentation on the MSBA process, but I think you pretty much all know it, we provided plenty of information for you, so that it's in one, kind of a one stop location, you can see it. Slide that's up now pertains to reimbursement rate factors. Some of them are set by the statute and by the MSBA regulations, and that gets you a base rate of 31 percentage points, and from there, the rate can go up depending upon particular particular factors and design of the school. We did have success in getting the Southwest Middle School to lead silver, which gave us an additional million dollars in reimbursement from the MSBA. You can see, again, I won't read them, you're certainly able to do it, but some of those factors are, we obviously endeavor to get the highest reimbursement rate possible, and we've had great success in that, you may remember that Quincy High School was 90%, and the others are in the higher range of average. So, I think I will probably stop talking, but Tawaka's nodding.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna recognize Counsel, Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Chairman Phelan. I'm very, I'm thrilled with the fact that we were able to raise to 380 student capacity, that's great job on the city to pursue that, it's, it's very important, because it's not only, not only important to the Squatom community, but also allows a wider range of folks to be, wider range of children to be able to, to be able to experience a brand new school, and that's, that's where we're at. When you look at the presentation that was brought off, brought out, you can see that we're right there, and it's a school that needs to be, I've rang this bell for, what, six years now? Please, this is something that's, that's, I asked my colleagues, it's very important, it's, it's it's important not only for my ward, but it's important to the other folks that can take advantage of a brand new facility, and what's very important is to me, is that the fact that at one point, I'd like to get the community involved with being able to take a look at, for instance, it's been an issue since 1997, when I moved into Squatom, when my children were small and we were going to bringing them to school, the Huckins, Huckins, Huckins Road, are you kidding me? How dangerous that street is, just to be able to have an opportunity to make life easier for the residents of my ward on Huckins, but also create a safe environment for the children to be able just come to school. I'm surprised there hasn't been more serious issues with that situation, anybody who's held a sign or was meeting and shaking hands at that polls would know how tight that is, and how how very, very lucky there hasn't been anything that's very serious to take place, so again, I wanna get the, I wanna get the community involved, I wanna get folks involved in this, and please, I asked my colleagues, this is very important, and please, if you would, I make a motion to approve.
Motion is approved, do we have a second? Don't need a second, committee, all right. Counsel Liang.
Thank you, my hand was raised a second, but I am happy to support this. I wanted to just speak on and recognize and acknowledge the, the sort of ongoing I wanted to just speak on and recognize and acknowledge the sort of ongoing conversation that's been happening around this building with, you know, the feasibility study and to include in that the conversation to have a net zero emissions build-out as a possibility into what that would look like as we move forward in this process with the MSBA. And so I do wanna just, again, recognize that, you know, we had spoken about this at the last council meeting when this was first introduced, and quite a number of my colleagues, I know are in support of this. But, you know, we also want to make sure that we're moving forward the best way we can so that we do get this approved. And so I wanna just quickly shout out and then give him the floor, Mr. Walker. Mayor's office, we had talked extensively about what we can do to incorporate a request and codify a request to make sure that exploring the option of a net zero emissions build-out is going to be a priority in this. They're on the same page, they're interested in doing this as well. We have a track record in the city of doing this already. One of the high-performance schools with MSBA build-outs is actually Quincy High School. So we already have a record in the city where that has been proven to be a priority for us. But again, I think it's important to recognize that there's a number of residents who wanna make sure that that priority is codified. Mr. Walker, if you could just sort of talk through what our process is going to codify that, and then I can speak a little bit about their resolve that I'm gonna be introducing later on. Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, is that okay that I do that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you, Counselor. I certainly appreciate the conversation we've had over the last several days relative to this. I guess upfront, I would say on behalf of the administration, there's certainly no daylight between your thoughts, Counselor, and some of the thoughts raised by other counselors relative to the pursuit of a net zero building. When we got to discussing a little bit further whether or not it would be appropriate to add the language to this council order, that's when we reached out to MSBA through the superintendent, continued those discussions. MSBA prefers us not to alter the language of the order, it's a very technical process, they look at everything. It's pre-baked, so to speak, that the order that was originally presented to the council was pre-approved by the MSBA. That's really what they want us to focus on. That being said, the mayor has certainly committed, the school team is certainly committed to pursuing, to whatever extent is humanly possible, getting to a net zero building. And I also understand that the wish is to have that memorialized in some way. There's a couple ways to do that, and I think you're gonna get to that as based upon some of our discussions, Counselor. But I would just suggest that the MSBA advises us not to alter the language of this particular order. Now, going forward, there's gonna be more orders to come. And if this body and the groups involved don't feel satisfied or in any way, shape, or form feel like we need to be inclusive of some additional language in future appropriation orders, that's entirely possible. But heading into this process, strictly the feasibility process, the MSBA has made it very clear to us they would rather not have that language, and it does have the ability to slow us down a little bit because then the MSBA would have to look at the order, go through their legal team, go come back to us, there's a very good chance that we may have to redo some things, and we would just rather not. Again, all things being equal and all things being considered, there's absolutely no daylight between what you've just said, Counselor, and what a number of the other councils has raised, and what we fully anticipate to do going forward with this, with the feasibility request. And I think you'll get to, excuse me, what you believe is a way to do that and memorialize it in a way that sort of addresses all of this together. Thank you, Madam Chairman. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give him the floor to do that. Again, I, for me anyways, certainly codifying that is important. Again, just looking at our track record, I know that this is something that is a priority for us that we wanna move towards. And so for that piece of it, I have no doubt, but it is important, right? To again, acknowledge that, you know, many folks in the city, myself included, we do wanna see this codified somewhere. So again, folks, I will be introducing language later on during the motions, orders, and resolutions, essentially to, you know, ask that this feasibility, this feasibility study for the Squanton School includes language for the possibility of a net zero emissions build-out. I'll be introducing that later on, and then to just reiterate Mr. Walker's point, you know, the next time there is a request in front of the council for the build-out of the school, which there will be a next time, we certainly have the opportunity in those moments to add this language in there as well. So I'm really grateful for the sort of collaborative effort to make sure that we're addressing this, and yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Yang. Next, next is Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Chair. Could I just ask for clarification? Because I think Counsel Yang, you're saying you're gonna add language to something else, but I think Mr. Walker said we shouldn't have language because the MSBA is discouraging that. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Walker, in this one, in this $1.5 million request?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What I'm suggesting, and in collaboration with Counselor Yang, is that we do not make a move to alter the actual language in the appropriation order as requested by the MSBA. But that the council, through Counselor Yang, who I believe at the meeting, I won't put words in her mouth, but is going to propose a resolution that will memorialize in writing the council's wishes on this subject, to which the mayor will sign and to which the mayor will agree to.
Okay. I just wanna clarify, I appreciate that, Mr. Walker, it was just a little, a little convoluted. Because I know that there was 11 schools, at least 11 schools that are net zero in the state of Massachusetts that the MSBA has done, so I know that they've done it, so I'm sure that they would be encouraging that, especially in the situation that we find ourselves in currently globally with the, with what's happening in Ukraine. We do really wanna try to make sure that we're making ourselves as independent as possible, and a net zero building would be definitely the right message for us in the city of Quincy to be, to be trying to achieve. And I think Squanton Elementary School is the perfect school for that to happen at. Can I just ask one other question? I think this, I'm not sure if this would be to Susan O'Connor or not. And I just was curious, what was the feasibility breakout for, I should know this because I was in the school committee, for Sterling or for Central Middle School, just out of curiosity? Do we know?
Is that, is that question to me, Counselor?
Yeah, I don't know if you know.
I know, I believe that Sterling might have been about $600,000. I do not recall the other, to be honest with you.
And that's okay. I guess my question then, and to back to Mr. Hines, is, you know, this is $1.5 million, and I'm trying to understand the escalation of cost. I did do some research on the MSBA, and I know that just recently in 2017, '22, Holyoke just made an approval for $475,000 of a feasibility study for a middle school, and this is an elementary school, which by the way, I'm absolutely pro-education, so I'm perfectly okay with the buildings that we're building. I'm just questioning why the feasibility for the elementary school has doubled in price in comparison to what we do with a middle school, and I understand costs have gone up.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, you're correct, costs have gone up, they've gone up exponentially. In addition, the site constraints at Squanton play into this as well. The neighborhoods around it, the streets that surround it. The hope to get to net zeros, increasing the testing and the due diligence upfront before we get to the schematic design, we need to know what we can do. The designers, the fees have just escalated. These numbers that are presented are in line with other current projects for the MSBA. We did pull the information from the website, Laura Owens, Jeff Barrett. We're right in line with the schools that are going in.
For other elementary schools or this size?
They're across the board.
Yeah, because, yeah, because the middle school, like I said, the middle school in, in Holyoke, which is the most recent one that just passed, was $475 million, and it actually has more students than the middle school. And again, you know, I'm not questioning, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand that. And I, I did build into costs, but this is, this too will be, it's reimbursable from the MSBA. It will, it will add on, all of the pieces will add on. So should you not spend, well, it looks like you have already committed that the certain amount will go towards the design and build-out. But one of the questions I have too is, you know, we're just talking about net zero, and you said that the net zero is actually built into the 1.5, I just wanna make sure, you did say that, right?
Not, not the, not the entirety of it, no.
No, no, I know it's, I know not the entire, I know, I know it's gonna cost a lot more than 1.5 to have it, but that's taken into consideration. So, so what I'm trying to say is that in the $1.5 million in our design build-out, and although we're not changing the order, the bonding order, you know, I know that they're gonna, they're talking about changing the, a resolve to change the language out of there, but in the, for the owner's project manager and the design architect, they're both aware that we want a net zero building, is that correct?
They have not yet been engaged.
So the 1.5, you did say though, in the 1.5, that it was including net zero, that was your thinking that is consideration.
Correct. Got a couple of questions popping. So the OPM and the design is not yet selected. I'm pretty careful with the, with the appropriations tonight, we put out the RFP for those positions. And the, or the RFQ, RFPs, RFS, whatever they process for using on it, will mandate, it will say that they have to be versed in and geared towards the net zero building. The other aspect of it is, it will initially at these steps cause additional testing. And, and part of the things, I fully take it with your word, but Holyoke spent, but I don't know the site where they built, it could be a flat gravel lot as opposed to a jagged lot in the middle of a neighborhood, what's like.
Yeah, well, your site, your site in elementary, site testing is only 300,000 of the 1.5, so it's not that high. It's, you know, mostly, most of it is in the project manager and the design architecture. It's just, again, I mean, Sterling Middle School had many challenges, and I'm not saying that, that Squanton doesn't. It just seems that the prices escalated, it seems to be much higher than what we had done in the past. And I realize, you know, costs have changed, but in other communities, it's lower, it's just a question, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils wishing to speak? Counsel DeBona, Counsel President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to see this has come in front of us, and I'm happy to support this new Squanton Elementary School. Obviously, our counselor in Ward Six, Counselor Harris, I'm on board with him and his desires to get the kids into this new school. 380 students is great, it's always great to increase the enrollment in each school. As we, I know formerly being on the school committee, we ran into some issues with, especially at the elementary level, with how do we fit all the kids inside these 11 elementary schools? And, you know, obviously, some of the schools are at capacity, and this would alleviate. And I knew that, I know Superintendent Moby and Assistant Superintendent Perkins were on it too, as well as with the, with the possible redistricting of the schools. And this would alleviate a lot of situations here with 380 students, and I'm looking forward to this. Obviously, moving this forward into the next direction, getting the proper reimbursements for the particular site. Just to elaborate a little bit, I know we're gonna move this, but the net zero, I've gotten a lot of emails previously, and I'm on board with, with getting to a net zero rate, and I don't wanna mess up any of the preliminary things for this particular item, but your, your, your voices have been heard, and we're gonna do the best we can to, to, to process that down the road. Just real quick, if someone has an answer, what is the origin, what's the enrollment right now at Squanton Elementary? Is there, do you know how many, Mr. Hines, or anyone, or do you have these today with the students at Squanton Elementary?
Three hundred and thirty-five, I believe, but Superintendent Moby's on, and I apologize, Aaron, I'm so sorry for your name.
No problem. 335, thank you very much for having us tonight. Thank you, Superintendent. What is, what is the maximum capacity right now on, in the school? We're at about capacity now. So 335 is the capacity and 380 is what our build-out's gonna be? Correct. And that would add 45 students, almost 50 students, and that, that's huge. I know when the, when the Sterling Middle School, I believe we're at 340, and now we're up to 430. So it added 90 students, and obviously with the COVID and who knows with the future of what that has to hold with possibly, you know, resurging, you know, obviously we need particular space in the building. And now, just over the years, being in the, inside that facility, there's a lot of Band-Aids, especially in the library particular area, some of the leakage that over the years, we've just put on Band-Aids and Band-Aids and Band-Aids. And now we're at a chance to, to move this forward and, and do a brand-new particular, a brand-new school. Looking forward to obviously this, it's been such a long time since we've done an elementary. We obviously did Central and Southwest, Two Middles, and then we did Quincy High School in 2010. Believe the last one we've done has been Clifford Marshall, I believe, back in, I think, what, 1999-ish? Is that, is that about right? So it's been.
Earlier than that.
Is he even further than that? Night, it's, no, it was after that, because I went to Quincy Point in 1989, and they closed for eight years. I wanna say 1997 or 98. It was particularly, and I think Assistant Superintendent Perkins, we were in the same class, so we had to, we had to move over to Sterling for, for one year. But then, eight years later, they built the new Clifford Marshall, and the Daniel Webster School became the Point Webster now. So that's a little, little history on the elementaries throughout the city of Quincy. But I know Counsel Phelan and some of the, Counsel McCarthy could talk about the Cranch and all those ones and the Willards, but I'm in the next generation off with, with talking about these ones. But I'm looking forward to moving this forward tonight and getting this into a stage where we can, we can move on this. So I know Counsel Harris has been waiting a long time, so we, I'm all in favor, I'm, I'm, I'm all on board with it tonight, and I'm gonna be yes vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, is there any other councils wishing to speak? Seeing that, I, I'm just gonna speak my position on this. I intend on supporting this measure. I, as, as a former employee, I spent a lot of time in the Squanton School, and I saw some of the conditions, and it is definitely need. And congratulate Counsel Harris because he's been on this for a while, banging the, banging the drum and going after this. So, but I think it's something that it's really needed for, for our kids in the same. I also am gonna support Counsel Yang's, when she brings in the resolve later. I understand why we probably shouldn't put it in and make it part of it, but I do think that this should be the goal with every building that we're doing. First of all, the cost it saves, and also in the energy costs and all that, and the very position we're in now, we can't afford not to. So I intend on voting yes for this, and later on, I'll also be supporting Counsel Yang when she brings in her, her resolve, which I realize we can't put it in with the language with the MSBCA and all that. And we wanna, we want this to continue because it's definitely way overdue and very much needed for the residents of Squanton. So I intend on, I intend on voting yes for this tonight. At that point, I believe we have a motion on the table. And is there any other councils before we go to the motion? Okay, none? I'll ask Clerk of Committees to call a roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Tomucci.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Eight members for positive recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you, members.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for, for coming and giving the presentation. And Superintendent Moby, thank you for bringing your team along too. Okay, at this point, with no other business before the, before the, before the, yeah, before the Finance Committee, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn, adjourn the Finance Committee, I believe we have a few minutes before the public hearing starts. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'm moved. The committee isn't adjourned.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call a public hearings, I'd like to call the Monday, March 7th, 7:30 PM, public hearings to order. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of the 2021 signed by Governor Charles E. Becker, June 16th, 2021, extending the certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL 3820, the city, Quincy City Council will be convening via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QATV, channel QATV 9, Government Access, and live streaming app, www.qatv.org. This public hearing is on Council Order 2021-031, Utility of Grant of Location, National Grid Gas, Quincy Ave. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise hand feature or dial star nine on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. So that being said, do I have anybody in favor or against? And here we go, let's see. Okay, I don't, seeing none, there's none. So no written correspondences have been received by the Clerk of Committees for this item. And seeing not further public comment, I would close. And seeing not further uh public comment, I would close the public hearing at seven thirty one. Again, we're back again. Um, I'd like to call uh the Monday, March seventh, seven thirty five P M. Um, public hearing to order. Again, again, in accordance uh with, I don't know why I have to read this. I should know it by heart. In accordance with the chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker, June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, G L thirty eight and twenty, the Quincy City Council will be convening convening uh via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television. Q A T V, channel Q A T V nine, government access and live streaming app W W U dot Q A T V dot org. This public hearing is on order, twenty twenty one dash thirty two, utility grant of location, Mass Electric. Quincy Street slash uh seventy three Liberty Street. So at this point, I'd like, I'd like to ask um folks who are wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature. Or dial star nine on your phone. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. So that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against?
Mr. Rastro has asked to speak.
Oh, this is interesting. Go ahead, John. John. John, where are you? Go ahead. John.
There I am.
There you are. Go ahead.
John Rotifield, sixty two Grand Wall Road. Um, I just wanna say, I keep hearing that thing about Charles D. Baker. His middle name is Dwayne, so I just looked that up because I keep hearing you guys saying that. So anyone watching, if anyone cares about that, you know, it's a good fact that you actually learned at this meeting. But basically, I'm in favor of this. This is um because of the um developing that they're doing. We need to put in these new poles and we definitely have to make sure we have enough electricity. My just issue is just that, you know, um, you know, one of the reasons I'm speaking, um, it's not like I I I'm a real big fan of the electric companies or a real big fan of the gas companies. I'm actually would like to say it's um the opposite. I I think they charge too much money for electricity and too much money for gas. But that's for another time and place. But this is an opportunity to speak and I like to speak. Um, um, and my point is that I would also like to speak on when money is being borrowed and bonded.
Um, yeah. Uh, John, John, I'm gonna have to interrupt you. This is about utility grant of location, Ken. I'm sorry.
I realize that. I realize.
I have to as as.
But the reality is.
As a chairman of the.
Seventy five million.
As a chairman of this.
It's only like four hundred million.
I appreciate, I appreciate you, I appreciate your.
I appreciate.
Passion. I appreciate your passion. Um, and you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris.
Thank you. I appreciate, again, thank you. I appreciate your passion, John, on trying to um get your 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 word uh in on another issue. But unfortunately, um, I I only, I I would not cut you off if if this was a public hearing on what you were gonna speak to. So um, at that point, and again, John, uh, I I love your passion and I've always enjoyed talking with you. So with that being said, I don't see that there's any further um uh public comment. I'd like to close the public hearing at seven thirty eight. And John was just trying to ruin my, I I thought we were gonna have one of the fastest of public hearings uh on record and John ruined that for me. That's okay. Folks, we're gonna have the regular meeting gonna start in a couple, couple minutes. Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to call to meeting the order, um Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty two. We are now seven forty three P M. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Present.
Counsel Kane.
Present.
Counsel Harris.
Present.
Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney.
Present.
Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Palmucci.
Present.
Counsel Phelan.
Present.
President Debona.
Present.
Eight members you have a quorum.
I'd like to get a moment of silence. Um, use it as you wish. If you look um for the Ukrainians in Ukraine, they're over there. Just keep them in your thoughts and prayers and our military as well. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any per person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. In accordance with chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one, signed by Governor Charles D. Baker. June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one, extending extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty. The Quincy City Council will convene via remote conferencing services that will livestream and air on Quincy Access Television. Q A T V, channel Q A T V nine, government access. Uh, Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
Number one is a presentation, citywide hydrant flushing program, Public Works Commissioner Al Graziosso.
Um, Commissioner, I'm gonna put you on and and counselors, we're gonna, um, if you can keep your um questions or comments to the uh when he completes his presentation. Uh, Commissioner, feel free, you're, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. President, city counselors. Um, tonight, we will be discussing a citywide hydrant flushing program that D P W will be implementing um in the public relations campaign associated with that. Joining me this evening is um City Engineer Paul Costello and Steve Olson from H two Olson Engineering. Uh, Steve's career in the water industry has spanned over thirty years as a consulting engineer, water utility manager, and educator. As a consulting engineer, Steve has successfully led and completed multifaceted projects representing every aspect of public drinking water. Utility manager Steve has served in the role of mass director of operations for the largest private water utility company in New England. Aquarian Water Company, water superintendent and technical advisor for over half a dozen water systems in Massachusetts. And as an educator, Mr. Olson has served on the New England Water Works Association Corrosion Control Committee as an instructor for over fifteen years. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Steve uh to begin the power.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, can anyone see my screen?
Yes.
So I'm here to talk about the hydrant flushing program. Uh, thank you. Uh, first, I'm gonna go over an outline of what we're gonna be talking about. Uh, we're gonna try to answer a few questions, some common questions about what a hydrant flushing program is, the impacts of a flushing program. Then we'll describe uh the Quincy City press uh flushing program, go over the proposed schedule, write some additional details and give some information on the public relations uh information the D P W is prepared to uh provide. So what is a hydrant flushing program? Well, water mains are prone to the buildup of sediments, which are inert natural minerals and tuberculation that can restrict flow, impact pressures, limit fire flow availability and cause discolored water. Uh, the photograph in the center of the slide shows two pipes. The pipe on the left shows some tuberculation and the pipe on the right is is a clean pipe. So hydrant flushing can help clean pipes of accumulated sediments. So flushing program involves systematically opening selected fire hydrants and flowing them for fifteen to forty five minutes to remove accumulated sediments that can build up over time because episodes of discolored water. So why is the city of Quincy, the D P W, implementing a hydrant flushing program? Well, for two reasons. Uh, the first one, it was recommended by the citywide water system master plan hydraulic modeling completed by Tetra Tech Engineering. And also, it's recommended by the Department of Environmental Protection for all public water systems. So why are, what are the impacts of hydrant flushing? Well, flushing is usually done in the evenings uh between starting around nine P M and going through the early morning, you know, five A M. And the hydrants are flushed until they're clear in order to minimize impacts to customers. However, using water while crews are flushing can pull discolored water into your home. So although the water is still safe for consumption during flushing, customers should avoid using water. For example, doing laundry, washing dishes in the evenings while crews are flushing in the neighborhood. So again, the main reason to uh flush in the evenings is to uh avoid impacts to customers typically when they're sleeping. Um, and customers aren't using much water. That's when you're, you wanna do some controlled flushing. So what is the city uh, the D P W's flushing program all about? So we worked on the flushing program with the D P W and it's broken in, it's broken the city down into three sections or phases, we're calling them. Each phase has twenty four to fifty eight routes and each route has eight to twelve hydrants to flush. So if you do the math, you get a over thirteen hundred hydrants that we're gonna be flushing um for the system. So the goals and objectives, uh, each phase will take about six to eight weeks to complete. Um, the the goal is to complete one phase per season and typically flushing is done in either the spring or the fall. Um, and the goal is to flush the entire system at least once every two years. So this slide shows um the three phases. So it shows the city graphic on the right. And for flushing to be effective, it starts at a source of clean water, then proceeds sequentially through the distribution system. So phase one, which is on the bottom, uh, which is mostly West Quincy and uh the city center. Um, that's, was chosen for phase one because most of the M W A connections are there. Phase two is off to the east and that's the Adam Shore area. And phase three is to the north, Wallaston, North Quincy and Squonham. So this graph again shows the three phases uh of flushing program. So here's a blow up of the phase two uh of the flushing program. Phase two has twenty four individual flushing routes. And you can see that the uh phase two proceeds from the left, from the left to the right. So you're proceeding sequentially. Uh, you wanna do one route after another so that you're drawing water through a clean section and flushing to the next section. So some of the details about uh the D P W's proposed program. So the planned schedule is to complete phase one this coming spring. Uh, and then phase two next fall, so the fall of twenty twenty two. And then next spring, a year from now, do phase three. So then again, that would achieve their goal of flushing the entire system once every two years. So the plan would be to flush Sundays through Thursdays on non-holidays in the evenings, uh, anywhere between eight to ten P M and then finishing from four to six A M. And the hours would change based on the neighborhood and based on the type of uh customers in the area. Uh, the duration, uh, phase one, which again, they're planning the spring, would start sometime in April and continue through May. Phase two would begin usually in October and continue throughout November. So then again, a year from now, next spring would be April through May again for phase three. So how is the D P W gonna be running this program? They'll be using uh internal staffing. They'll have a flushing manager who will deal the day-to-day operations of sending the crews out, uh, planning which loops to do and um and so that sequentially it's uh carried through. Uh, the flushing crews will begin up of D P W staff. There'll be the flushing crews. Again, they'll be out in the evenings and in the early morning hours, they'll be wrapping it up. And then there'll be a response crew available if there's any customer issues or anything needs to be addressed in the morning um to to clean up sort of. All right. And one of the, so we're saving this for last, but it's one of the most important pieces. It's the public relations piece. So the D P W wants to get the message out, get the word out about the flushing program. Um, they've had a number of internal meetings with staff, with the managers. They've met with the mayor and here we are tonight, meeting with city council and we're hoping to reach, you know, the public uh to describe a little bit about the program. There's also plans to uh send some emails to public officials, department heads, you know, fire chief, police chief, describing the program and all the details, you know, the times and duration of the dates. They'll send a similar email, make up some flyers, uh, send that to stakeholders, the schools, daycare, nursing homes, restaurants, just so they know what's going on. Uh, they'll have some staff meetings with critical customers. So staff will meet with critical customers to let them know what's going on. Just again, to minimize impacts. They'll put some advertisements in newspapers. Uh, they're hoping to get something on local cable TV. There were dates and times and, you know, names of streets, where they're gonna be uh each week so you can track progress. They'll also be providing details on the website. Again, so customers can track progress, track it to know where they are, where they're going next. So you can plan ahead. Uh, the plan is also supposed to have some electronic message boards, um, just some generic information, flushing in the city. Some flushing. Uh, there's also uh an opportunity to use code red reverse nine warning calls to select the neighborhoods, you know, the the evening before or a week in advance, just to get the customers and residents um information ahead of time. And there'll also be some training for their constituent relationships once. Um, you know, just so everyone knows what to expect, you know, if they get certain phone calls and customers, what can typically happen and just how to answer questions. So that's kind of a background of the public relations uh program. And with that, um, open up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, Commissioner, and as well as Mr. Costello that's on uh for your presentation. It looks to me to be very thorough and uh I think getting the information tonight, getting it out to the public to let them know ahead of time. You know, to give them kind of like a overview of of the dates and times. Um, counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Anybody? Uh, Counselor Phelan, you go first.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of questions. I know you said you were gonna be letting people know when, when it's gonna happen. So you listed all those things. I'm assuming they are all part of it that you've already planned on using. Uh, because it is an off time and people do, you know, um, do need notice. That's one of the key things. I think uh letting people know. I would also be careful when you come in near our business area where there's restaurants and stuff making their business because they may go past nine o'clock at night. And some of them are open till actually one o'clock. So I think that that it's really important that you let them know and also it would be real important that the fire department is part of this. Because they're the ones who uh, what it obviously needs to get done. They need the water and they need it right there. Uh, I support the overall concept of the program. Obviously, to to make drinking water fresh is what we, the reason we we voted for all the, all the stuff in the last bond issue was to make uh, make our drinking water secure and safe. So um, just uh I'll reiterate how important it is to get the information out before coming. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, so just a couple of quick questions. I I know that um, I know that, I'm gonna go back to my notes. Um, you said they're gonna do robo calls. Are we gonna be, are we gonna be mailing to people too or just letting them know neighborhoods? Because when you flush, this is, this is the question, when you flush the systems, after you're done flushing, there can be residual. When you turn in your water the next day, there still can be some residual groundwater if you do a wash. Isn't that true after you flush a system?
There can be a little bit, but um the goal is to flush the hydrants uh until it's clear.
Yes.
Done, if it's done right, you know, you you go sequentially, you get to that dead end street and you get all the discolored water out of the system. So the risk is if customers use water during.
During night.
They draw into their service, you know, in the evening. So that could provide it. But uh typically, um, you know, if you're not using water, you're not gonna notice.
Right. And I think doing, I mean, doing it from nine to five in the morning makes a ton of sense, but there's a lot of people who work night shifts. Um, so they they might be working, um, they might be doing their, there might be more of a night night person as opposed to a day person doing their things. Um, you know, typically, a lot of us usually have our stuff done at that point, be twenty nine o'clock, but then there's other people who do it later in the night. So I guess we just wanna make sure that we're communicating to people. I know Counsel Phelan just mentioned restaurants will be open later in the day. So I guess it's just being really considerate to the fact of the areas and the the sections that you're doing this in. I I I guess I wanna go backwards for one question. This would be to um, Commissioner Graziosso. And I appreciate the presentation and I think it's something, I think what you're saying is this is something that we're gonna be, we're doing and we'll try to do this every two years. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And when was the last time we did it?
Um, I would have to check, Counselor. Um, it's been, it's been a few years. I would have to check, Counselor. It's been, it's been a few years.
Okay. And so when, when we're doing it, it will be DPW workers that are doing the work from nine to five in the morning. Is that true?
Correct. Yes.
And then, so I'm just, I'm just curious, how does, you know, and, and I appreciate the presentation, presentation. So it's to Olson Engineering. Where, where is this thing, where is this contract coming from and what, what avenue is that being paid for? I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing it. I'm just kind of trying to figure out where, where does this fit into the overall picture?
I would have to check. Mr. Olson's contract is out of, I believe, water contractual.
Okay. Okay. And then if we run into any problems, will, will Mr. Olson's engineering company be helping us solve those problems? I'm assuming that, you know, we'll be using our DPW group to go out and do this. And then if we have any, any issues, is that what will happen?
Yes. I mean, any issues, we would be able to handle internally. Yeah, most of, the most important part of this again is the public relations, just to let people know that they're not using their washing machine at ten o'clock at night when we're flushing the system or the dishwasher. You know, and again, we, if there's any type of issues in the morning, we, you know, our team will be ready to, to handle that.
No, I certainly, I certainly understand that. I just, I'm just saying that, you know, sometimes you run into something that you weren't anticipating running into. And, and I just wanted to make sure, I mean, this is, it sounded like in the presentation, it was going to be mostly DPW workers that will be doing this work. And I was just curious to know, like, where, where the Olson Engineering, I appreciate the presentation. I'm just trying to see, figure out where that fits into the overall. What plan, what, what part of the budget it fit into. So.
Yeah, this, this, this is all part of our water master plan. Hydraulic modeling in our water master plan that has identified where we need new water mains, fire flow issues. It's, it's all part of that.
I probably wasn't there for that presentation. That's why I'm probably, I'm sure all the councillors may be familiar with it. I'm just not familiar with it. And then the last question, this is, this is of course just a situation. I just, what happens if like, if you're flushing those systems and there is an emergency? Like say there's a fire and you're flushing those systems. What happens then? I'm just curious. I hope this doesn't happen. I'm just, I'm just.
We work in conjunction with the fire department. Steve, you, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, typically you would stop flushing. And the crews that are out flushing, they'll assist in any way they can to fight them out.
Okay. I'm sure that you have a, you have an emergency plan for that. I was just curious because it's, it's a, it's a large undertaking. And, and it, you're hoping to have this done, you're hoping to have this done the spring, summer, and fall, correct?
Correct. And this also helps us to identify any issues along the way with hydrants that may need to be replaced. That's part of the process also.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I thank you very much for the presentation and, you know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that you're doing this because I think it will make, I just do know the worst case scenario, forget about anything else, about fire departments needing water to take it to a hydrant that doesn't have any water. If you don't do the flushing correctly, that could be the bigger problem. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, Counselor.
Counsel Harris.
Thank you, President Tabana. I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Graziosi. I mean, we have worked together on several things and one of the situations and just the fact that we're out, I applaud, also applaud the city of the fact that we're letting folks know what's taking place. I know we had a situation in my ward where we were doing some smoke, if you remember that, Al. And, and you know, you folks were great, but there was a situation where, you know, where they were filling smoke into lines that went trying to find where certain problems are and a smoke appeared in, in a household. And it just happened to happen to one of, one of my constituents and, but I, you know, of course, Al, you, you immediately and your, your, your team went right to the scene and took care of the situation. And with the fact that we're letting folks know, letting folks know what's taking place and it's an important thing that's taking place. Again, I commend you, your department, yourself. I think the city is lucky to have you at the helm. I appreciate it. Thank you, Al. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Mr. Olson, feel free to, to interject.
Yes, thank you. I just had a quick comment regarding Counsel Mahoney's comment regarding the fire department. And just, just another benefit of flushing program, not only are you flushing the water to make the water clear, but again, you're touching over thirteen hundred hydrants. So if you find a hydrant and it might be broken, you know, you're notifying people and you're getting that repaired. So there's another benefit here, ensuring those hydrants are going to work in the future. You might not know it's working, but by flushing it and operating, then you'll know and you have the opportunity to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. And any of the councillors? Real quick, Mr. Olson, if we could, and Commissioner Graziosi, I know previously we had a lot of issues, obviously, with national grid in the past and, you know, we, we got on like a chain email where any power outages came right to us right away. And it really helped out all the councillors understanding what's going on throughout the city. Can you, you know, ahead of time, give us, like, do you have the set schedule to go right now or you're looking to evolve it in the next few months?
We're, we're working on that right now, Counsel, but we're, our goal is, you know, sometime, sometime in the beginning of April. So we're working on the program now.
If, if I can make a recommendation is, is to let all us councillors be in the loop with which ward it's, and maybe you break it down by ward because all the ward councillors have to, you know, represent a particular area. It looks like the, the map looked like that earlier, but it just helps us ahead of time. We get a swarm of emails and phone calls and we're not aware of it. So if you guys can just keep us in the loop, really like at least give us a week lag or a two-week lag, like to let us know, okay, we're going, we're looking to go to Ward One now and we're looking to, to alter Ward Three, that, you know, and just let us know. So we, we, we can get our constituents kind of really ready to alter a little bit of their plans and be particularly ready. I foresee, obviously, we talked about restaurants, we talked about folks that are, you know, working different type of shifts that may be taking showers at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, maybe even waking up very early at four and five to go to work. We're going to need to know this ahead of time. So we, we, we can, we can actually have a plan of attack to, to, to tell, let our constituents know, whether it be via newsletters or, or, or social media, whatever the case may be. Is that okay with Commissioner and Mr. Olson?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Counsel. That's the plan.
Okay. I'm looking forward to it. This is something that's well needed. Obviously, we're always talking about clean water and to flush this out, I think it's a great thing for the city. And I appreciate you guys putting this on in front of us tonight because it, now we can get the word out that, hey, listen, we're looking to do this now. Let's be prepared. If it comes into your particular neighborhood, it comes into your particular affecting your house, whatever days it does affect it. So thank you. Seeing no other councillors and thank you, Commissioner, for coming on tonight. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, City Engineer Costello for, for taking the time out tonight and give us insight on this. With that, Madam Clerk, do we have the next item on the agenda?
Yes, number two, twenty twenty-two dash zero three-three, in ordinance amending all municipal code with gender-neutral language.
Counsel Liang, feel free to.
Yeah, so this is pretty self-explanatory. It's, you know, just an update to our municipal code. It's, you know, really outdated right now. As we're updating our city, we probably should, you know, update the rules that govern it. And so I'm going to be moving this as well as the next one into ordinance committee for further discussion, but it really is just a sort of cleanup and update to our codes. So I'd like to make a motion to move this to ordinance.
Motion made by Counsel Liang to move this into ordinance and obviously be advertised as well. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phalen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, twenty twenty-two dash zero three-four, in order amending the rules of the city council with gender-neutral language.
Counsel Liang.
Same thing as the previous one, just I make a motion to move this to ordinance committee.
I want to move it to ordinance as well as be advertised. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phalen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, twenty twenty-two dash zero three-five, a resolve Quincy Retirement Board appear before the Quincy City Council to discuss the situation involving the loss of three point five million in funds.
Counsel Palmucci, would you like to take the floor on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think this, the resolve really speaks for itself. This is in response to what we learned publicly through the Patriot Ledger was a three and a half million dollar theft from the Quincy pension system. I think every single councillor, if not, if not every single councillor, then the vast majority had expressed some concern about, about this at the, at the last city council meeting. So I'd ask that this resolve be put into the Oversight Committee for Hearing, which I believe we already have a date scheduled. And I'll do the same with the next one.
Okay, we got a motion to approve and to refer to Oversight Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing now, we're going to have a roll call on this one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phalen.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number five, twenty twenty-two dash zero three-six, a resolve of the Quincy Retirement Board to appear before the Quincy City Council to discuss the transfer of funds to PRIM.
Counselor Palmucci, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is along the same vein as the last resolution. My thinking here was if we're going to have a conversation about the retirement system in general, that we should probably broaden the conversation to include whether or not the city pensioners would be better served in investing their retirement funds in the state governed system rather than the local governed system. And, and let me by, let me express by, by no means does this resolution state a position on that question. I'm not saying that that's something we should do. I think it's, it should be part of the conversation when we have the Retirement Board come or whoever they send to discuss the twenty twenty-two dash zero three-five. Also, I think I wouldn't be surprised if the Retirement Board indicate, if we only invited them to speak about twenty-two dash zero three-five, if they would indicate that due to the ongoing investigation, they can't speak to it. I do think we have some questions for them that aren't related specifically to that incident, specifically in terms of, of them providing information to the public, to the pensioners and to the rest of the city. So I would ask that this matter be adopted and referred to Oversight Committee as well.
Motion approved and referred to Oversight Committee. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phalen.
Yes.
President Tabana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Number six, twenty twenty-two dash zero three-seven, a resolve of opposition of House number nine oh eight, section five eleven, an act relative to recreation or private tide lands.
Wave, wave the reading and on, on that, Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel House, go right ahead.
Thank, thank you so much. Folks, please indulge me. You know, I have, you know, my knowledge of this, I have to thank some of my constituents who have reached out to me and we represent a whole, all of us, we represent a whole group of different, let's just say, locations, like in my case, I represent Marina Bay, Squanum, North Quincy, part of the Wallaston, part of Quincy Shore Drive, the Downs. We have different situations and I, I feel that none, not any of my, my constituents, whether it be a great, a great many of people or a few many of people. But this, this resolution is about, as it says, opposition to, you know, House Order nine oh eight and Senate Order five eleven. It's, it's really, really, when it was brought to my attention, I'm saying to myself, you know, we, we, the city of Quincy has about fourteen miles of coastline. So this probably is affecting my ward and probably possible Counsel McCarthy's ward and, and a little bit in between where there are folks who own, who have owned, it's probably been in their family, some of the places. The oceanfront property that actually is under their deed is, is under their, has been either left to them or they purchased a piece of property. And I'm sure it's not at a, at a cheap rate that, that's on the coast. And this resolution, and we have, with all due respect to State Representative Dylan Fernandez of possible and Dukes in Nantucket, has filed in the House and in the, in the, in the Senate, State Senator Julian Seer, who represents the Cape and the Islands, who's, who's filed the S five eleven, which is an, which is an act relative to obviously the private tide lands. Basically, they're going to add the words recreation relative to coastal private property. And again, many of our, many, quite, quite a few of my constituents, quite a few of, like I said, Counsel McCarthy's, quite a few of the three at-large councillors, constituents. Basically, what, what's, what's, what's being asked is that folks were going to be able to just come and go as they please with no, with, with no rules. And, but I really am going to use some of the wording that one of my constituents sent me. So I'm not going to take credit for this. And it really resonated with me when I got this and I, I was communicating with the, with Jen Manning to get this on, 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 on the agenda tonight. What resonated with me was when I read one of my emails while I was in Las Vegas. And I, I said, you know, I, I really need to put this on because it really does not make sense. And so this really does explain what, what I'm, I'm kind of asking for, for my, my constituents. So this, these acts are using the word recreation to language pertaining to, language pertaining to private coastal property. As one who, this is my constituent, one who owns such property, this grave concerns about the implications, implications such as change would introduce. My rights as a private property owner would be would be just incinerated by those who would stake their. would be just incinerated by those who would stake their claim in order to recreate. What does recreate mean? How would it be defined? Who would be the arbitrator of, of such a definition? Who would be the, uh, the, um, what would be the expectation by which those who recreate, whether in cleaning up upon their departure? How long would they be allowed to recreate? Two AM, twelve AM, uh, twelve AM, so forth, so on, noise and destruction? What would, what would the parameters be by which we gauge that? I absolutely foresee countless calls to local law enforcements to come and sort out those types of issues. And more which would only, uh, create community contempt amongst neighbors. Specifically those who own private beaches versus those who don't. And do we really need to add that type of, uh, responsibility to our law enforcement members? Their job is hard enough already. Next, what are the tax li- uh, tax patients? As a private coastal property owner, am I now, um, going to be forced to pay taxes on property that is for all intent and purposes public? I can assure you, I will not. Note to that, the Fifth Amendment language states, nor shall private property be taken for public use without ju- just compensation. Is the state prepared to pay tens of millions of dollars for the private, uh, property owners so a few folks can recreate on the newly designated public beach access? A clip, um, legally, there is a precedent protecting private coastal property owners both at the U.S. Supreme Court level and at the state court level in Maine. It is settled, it is settled law. It's already been settled, and the proposal is therefore unconstitutional. In addition, the Constitution protects my rights to pursue the pursuit of happiness. Said protection of happiness includes the security of property rights. Folks, I brought this in front of you because I feel a hundred percent behind this because, um, again, uh, some of the folks I represent have owned this property through their families, and again, um, I, I'm amazed, anybody who's read the Patriot Ledger, anybody lately about how the Secretary of Interior wants to change the names of Squaw Rock, Squanum. You have two state senators, a state senator and a state representative, two, two Massachusetts, uh, uh, folks that are representing the, the state, their, their, their areas, uh, that I, I, I don't know what the thought process is with the, these things. Aren't there so much, and, and, and somebody, uh, I think Mahoney mentioned Ukraine in one of her, um, explanations tonight. Aren't there better things for our state delegation? Not our state delegation, but the state delegation across the state? And a Secretary of Interior more important to be worried about than what's being presented? I know there is. We're going through tough times. I ask this body to, uh, to, um, support me with this so that we can send a message to our, uh, our, our state delegates to defend, um, it may be a few, but remember the few are the people we also represent. I ask that I, I have your confidence and we, we send the message to our delegates, our delegation, to not support these two measures. And with that, uh, I, I really, really appreciate your, um, you're, uh, allowing me to speak um, on this, and, uh, a- as always, I would always support any, any of my ward counselors, um, if, uh, any of their, um, constituents were in the same position in a different way. So, thank you with that, and, uh, back to you, uh, President Dubana. Thank you, folks. Please support it.
Counsel Harris, you got a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Um, do any have a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
I will abstain due to my day job.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, counselors.
Welcome, Counsel Harris. Um, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight, a resolve seeking an update on the new animal shelter.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so thank you very much. I'm just introducing this. We, we've been talking about the animal shelter since twenty seventeen, and I know, um, that they're moving ahead to, um, have maybe a temporary location, and I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not aware of where that location is going to be. So, what I was really asking for in this resolution is to move this into finance and just, um, or asking for, um, the city council be provided, be provided a presentation by the administration on the status of the animal shelter along with an update of that appropriation of three point five five, and what expenses have been used to date on that project. And then furthermore, just to provide an, um, maybe an update as to where the temporary location will be, but the factors went into the determination of that temporary location as well as any cost analysis of that temporary location versus the permanent location for the project timelines and anticipated completion dates. I mean, it's important, um, because, you know, we're, we're moving ahead to put it in a temporary spot, and we do have a location, and we have money that's been allocated out there. So, if we can move that into finance and oversight, that would be great.
Motion made to, to pass and to move into finance and oversight by Counsel Mahoney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, twenty twenty-two dash zero three nine, a resolve seeking an update on the downtown incremental funding, DIP.
Wait, wait, I think wait a minute. So, um, again, this is just an update. Um, I think we're up to a hundred and eighty-one million dollars for the downtown, um, the district, district improvement funds for the downtown. And, um, the last one was for the sixty-one million dollars. I know a couple of years ago, um, maybe twenty seventeen, there wasn't, there was a review of some of the funds that were spent to date. A lot of us are, there's several people who are new on the council, and I think it might be beneficial to have just a presentation on the monies that have just been spent to date, um, and then, um, update of the downtown, um, the DIP fund, including expenses and allocations of the funds, and then pertinent matters relating to the downtown, if there's any impending, um, funds that will be coming further for the downtown. As we start to turn the corner to start discussing the URDP for Wallston, it's important that we have a good understanding of what we've accomplished and what our goals are in the downtown and how those monies have been spent. Um, so I'm looking to, again, move this into finance and to oversight to have a discussion and a presentation.
Motion made by Counsel, uh, Mahoney to put it into finance and oversight and to approve. Uh, any, um, can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, twenty twenty dash zero four zero, a gift for fifteen hundred dollars from various donors for deer.
Can someone entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That, that is all the agenda items on the agenda. Uh, I need an approval of previous meeting minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan. Do I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. Uh, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have something on utilities?
We do, thank you very much. Um, we have our New England Power Company request permission to work, um, on Newport Ave, Southern Ottery, and Morrison Street, install electric cables in the underground duct bank extend from manhole number two, located approximately southwest corner of intersection of Newport Ave and West Squanum Street, and extending, extending southerly approximately seven thousand nine hundred and fifty feet in intersection with Newport Ave and Furnace Park Parkway. The cables also extend, extend southerly approximately three thousand three hundred and seventy feet along Southern Ottery from the intersection of Southern Ottery and Furnace Park Parkway to the intersection of Southern Ottery and Morrison Street, and easterly approximately five hundred and sixty-five feet along Morrison Street, across Field Street, and terminating in the Field Street substation.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do I need a motion to approve this or just information?
This is going into Public Works and Advertising. Thank you.
Okay, that Counsel Harris, Public Works.
Motion, motion to put it advertising.
Okay, motion made to put it in advertising by Counsel Harris. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries. Uh, unfinished business in proceeding, uh, meeting. Anyone? Reports of committees. I'm sorry, someone say something?
No, uh, um, I, um, during tonight, uh, Counsel, uh, President Dubana?
Yep, no problem.
Yep, so, uh, this evening, um, Public Works Committee, um, I, uh, items to be passed. So, uh, public hearings were held, uh, prior to this evening. Um, uh, City Council order twenty twenty, uh, one dash thirty-one, utility grant of location, national grid gas, uh, Quincy Ave, positive recommendation, um, uh, from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made, second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, what, which one was this?
Palmucci.
Yeah, sorry. Which one was this? Uh, Counsel Harris?
This is the, uh, the first one, a utility grant of location, national grid gas on Quincy Ave.
Okay, thank you.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
For clarification, Quincy Ave, um.
Motion to approve.
So, we have a motion to, uh, motion made, and we had seconded by Counsel Phelan, um, in discussion besides Counsel Palmucci? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, ma- um, motion carries. Um, Counsel Harris, do you have any more?
One more, uh, again, this evening, uh, twenty twenty-one dash zero three two, utility grant location of mass electric Quincy Street and seventy-three Liberty Street. Positive recommendation from, uh,
Can I go back?
From the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Do I have any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this one?
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Seven members.
Motion carries. Uh, any more, Counsel Harris?
That's it. That's it, President Dubana. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Counsel Phelan.
Yeah, Counsel Phelan, you, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, well, look, early this evening, we had a, we had a committee meeting of the Finance Committee, and we were taking two items uh, uh, up to dead, but the, the first one was an appropriation for two million, three hundred thousand dollars to purchase new Quincy Fire Department engine and ladder truck. Um, there, there was a positive recommendation from committee. I'd like to, uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Motion carries. Next item, I think, Counsel Phelan, go right ahead.
Yes, the next item was, uh, was, was an item for, for, for the Squanum School. One million, five hundred thousand dollars for feasibility study for a new Squanum School, elementary school in accordance with the MSBA process. Um, there was a positive recommendation from committee. I, I'd like to, um, I'd like to recognize Counsel Harris. I, I think he wants to make the motion now, and he's certainly done the work to get there.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Phelan. I'd like to make, make a motion to approve. Thank you so much.
Motion made by Counsel Harris.
Second.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, counselors. So appreciated. I can't tell you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other reports of committees, council members? Seeing none, we're going to the next. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Any counselors? Next, motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Liang.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, during the Finance Committee meeting, I'm going to be introducing a resolution um, in conjunction with the, um, the MSBA request that we're submitting to essentially make sure that throughout the process, we are going to sort of codify this request to see what the possibility is to make it a net zero school. Um, so I'm just gonna quickly read through it so folks know what I'm gonna be introducing, whereas the city of Quincy is appropriating the amount of one point five million dollars for the purpose of paying So I'm just going to quickly read through it so folks know what I'm going to be introducing, whereas the city of Quincy is appropriating the amount of one point five million dollars for the purpose of paying cost of a feasibility study for the Squanum School Elementary School, which the city of Quincy may be eligible for a grant from the MSBA. Whereas the MSBA, Mass Save and other entities offer incentives to Massachusetts schools for energy efficiency, lead certification, high performance and management of energy costs. Whereas the city of Quincy already has one high-performance school built from this process. Therefore, be resolved that the feasibility study for the Squanum School also include the possibility of a net zero emissions build-out. To my understanding, this resolve is going to be submitted, but does have to formally go on the agenda for a vote as an agenda item and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but that's the case, right? So we go on to the next council meeting and then we can vote and pass it then.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you all for entertaining this, this motion to do this, and hopefully I can count on all of your support when it comes up for a vote. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Liang. Any any other interjection from Mr. Walker? Is that good? Is that okay? No, okay. Real quick, I just want to go back to real quick on petition, memorials and remonstrance real quick. Counsel McCarthy is not on tonight. I just wanted to make a note that Counsel McCarthy's sister, Margaret McCarthy, had passed away and I want everybody to keep, you know, the McCarthy family in your thoughts and prayers. You know, I believe it's it's Counsel McCarthy's younger sister, so he wasn't on tonight and I, I hope, you know, we can keep it, you know, his sister and his thoughts and prayers for every other councils and everybody listening. So with that, any other folks for motions, orders and resolutions? Seeing none, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Think we had Counselor Palmucci still on at council?
Yeah, I think it's on, Madam Clerk of committees. What was the date and time of the Oversight Committee hearing relative to the Quincy Retirement Board?
I believe we got, yep, go right ahead.
The twenty-first, before the meeting on the twenty-first, at six thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilors, we have Monday, March twenty-first, six thirty Oversight Committee to come in with Counsel, Chairperson Palmucci. And then we'll start our seven thirty City Council regular meeting right after. Everybody good? You got that on your calendars? Great. And then Monday, April fourth, we have six thirty City Council and then Monday, April twenty-fifth, six thirty so far on our, on our committees, I mean, on our scheduling of meetings. All right, everyone, if I can get an entertainment for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Okay.
Meeting adjourned. It is now eight thirty eight PM. Thank you. Take care, everyone.